Okay, well, it is six o'clock on August 3rd, 2023, and I will call this City of Lacey Council Meeting to Order. Before we get started, just a couple items. We have two excused absences. Mayor Ryder will be absent, and Councilmember Stedman is also absent. And then one amended item, which is section or item 12B, which is under the City Managers' Report, will be amended and pushed out to the August 17th meeting. So for all those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So again, two absences and one amended item to the agenda. Can I please get a motion?
Move to approve the amended agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And there is none opposed, so that motion passes unanimously. We have an agenda. First on our agenda, it looks like, is public comment. It looks like we have two public comment items that were received and will be made part of the record of this meeting. And it looks like we have four people who are signed up for public comment tonight. And I'll issue the public comment statement, so that we're all aware of what public comment means in this forum. The public comment is the opportunity for community stakeholders to inform the Lacey City Council of their respective views on issues or items. The City Council does not engage in dialogue with the public during public comment. If, when you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence, or when you come up to the podium. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak to provide input. And those are our public comment rules. And it looks like first up, we have, is it Michael Jamison? Please come on up to the podium, sir, and state your city that you live in, and you will be given three minutes by the clerk, if possible. Okay.
I live in Lacey, Washington. I've lived here for 25 years now. I spent 45 years in the banking industry, 25 of it down here. I'm 73 years old, Marine, from '68 to '74. And I just came tonight because of, I've just heard some issues that have come up about some political signs and movement of those. And I wanted to come down and simply speak on behalf of Ed Kunkel. I've worked with Ed in real estate for 10 to 15 years. I've served with him on boards, Lacey South Sound Chamber ambassadors. I'm also a board member of the Lacey South Sound Chamber. And just in every dealing that I've had with him, and probably the most important thing that we've worked on together, as well as Michael Stedman, is the Lacey Gold Star Family Memorial, which we were finally able, after COVID and survive all that, get it up. And if you haven't seen it, I'm sure you have, it's beautiful. But yeah, I just wanted to speak to his integrity. Like I said, I've known him for a number of years. I have worked with him. I have served with him. And this ordeal, or I don't know what else to call it, has got to be a huge misunderstanding. I just, knowing him, I just know that if anything was done, it was not done with any malice or forethought, and it was confusion. And after listening to a lot of people talk about it, that's what conclusion I've come to. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I'd serve anywhere with you, Ed. And if I had to choose somebody to be in a foxhole with, it'd be you. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Nick Dunning.
All right, first of all, I just want to say my name is Nick Dunning. I'm a business owner here in Lacey, and I want to thank all you guys for having me here. Regarding the situation that the previous citizen was just talking about, at first, I was very upset and a little bit disappointed in our council. But one of the things I always preach is action, not activism, which requires change over time. So that's what I'd really like to focus on, is the things that this council altogether could have done to handle this situation differently. Councilwoman Cox and Vasquez, I do appreciate that you tried to have this brought to attention immediately during the work session. However, I do feel that a public comment should have happened before that. In a situation where we could have come together like today, for citizens to actually come and speak first, and actually get that feedback, would have been a more appropriate time to address the situation. Councilman Stedman, although he's not here, he should have done a better job because it was his opponent's sign that was taken to really show that it was nothing to do with him, and that that type of behavior is not in any way associated with him or his campaign. And I feel like he failed to do that in this instance. Deputy Mayor Malcolm and Mayor Ryder, who are not here, I understand not wanting to set a precedent. However, in doing so, we set a precedent that anything that anyone on the council does, their peers are not going to hold them accountable. So in the future, some sort of action has to be taken, public statement, even if it's individually, should happen, because the public trust is really what's important here. Councilman Kunkel, what concerns me is not this situation, specifically, because I understand that mistakes happen. But as you quoted, it being a habit is where I take the big issue. And that can be taken in a lot of different ways. But just the ability to think it was okay without being 100%, when there are other options, like having the business owner do it, filing a complaint, in no way can be tolerable. And so for that, I'd say I'm pretty disappointed in that action, and that should have been handled better. Councilman Greenstein, when you stated that the council didn't hold people accountable on larger issues, I feel like that was a mistake. As being a law and order candidate, that I do feel you are, and you proudly represent that, which you should, you don't get to pick and choose which violations of the law should be held serious and should not. So I think that was a misstatement from you, and I would be careful in the future how you address that. Because again, it is the public trust, as well as Mr. Kunkel has been on the council for three and a half years, four years now. You've been on it for 12. Although you weren't the one who physically grabbed that sign, you should have known better as well. You should have said something, you should have been sure, because it put you just in as bad a light in that situation. And to the both of you, what I really want, Councilwoman Kunkel and Councilman Greenstein, if I mentioned that, I apologize, I really want you to think that if this was your opponent in a race, would you be so forgiving? Would you do the same thing? Would you say, no, this isn't a big deal? And I would be very hard pressed to believe that wasn't. So you have to understand why people are outraged and upset about that. And just lastly, to the whole council, the community needs better in the future. It deserves better. The public trust in our democracy depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunning. Next on our list, we have, is it Joanne Fletcher? Do we have a Joanne Fletcher with us?
That screen is not refreshing, or so we're trying to see the timer.
Just before you get started, Ms. Fletcher, we do have a timer. It's just not on that screen. We'll hope to get that updated in the future, but it is that screen. Yeah. So it'll start at the three minutes in just a moment here, but just FYI.
Yeah. My name is Joanne Fletcher, and I have been a Lacey resident for probably almost 30 years. And like the first gentleman that spoke, I am here, and I'm blessed to be here to speak about Ed Kunkel and his character, and a humble man that he is. All of us make mistakes in life. And if each of us were judged for our mistakes, I'm sure all of us would be in a bad place, and we would feel like crap for that. I've known Ed for almost 30 years. He's been my realtor. He is somebody who will give you the shirt off of his back if he could. He is devoted to his family. He's devoted to his community. He's served our country. He's done a lot of things in our community. He's done things to help my family, not just my husband and I, but my parents. Sorry, I am not a public speaker. So for me to be here is a huge deal for me. But I felt compelled to be here because I too heard the things that were going on, and I'm shocked that it's turned into what it's turned into because of a mistake, a minor mistake. And there's so many other things in this world that are so important to be dealing with than this. So I'm here to just say that Ed is a great man. He is a humble man. And if you don't know him, you're missing out. He is a great person, and he would do anything for this community. And I'm honored that he's on our council. I don't ever attend council meetings. So that should be a bold statement to you, that I would come here and do this, because I couldn't believe what I was hearing. So, thank you, council, for this opportunity. And sorry, I'm so shaky. But, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And next on our list, we have Spencer Zeeman. Please state your name, city that you live in, and keep your comments to about three minutes.
Okay. Spencer Zeeman, Lacey resident for about nine years now. I'm a business owner in the community as well. And as a resident of this city, I'm once again disappointed by the conduct of this council. We have, now, there's a concept named servant leadership. It was coined by Robert Greenleaf. And I quote, "A servant leader shares power, puts the need of employees, or in this case, the public first, helps people develop and perform as highly as possible. Instead of the people working to serve the leader, the leader exists to serve the people." I think this was the vision of the constitutional founders of this country, and I think we have strayed, not just at this level, at all levels of government. And it is vitally important that we recover the trust of the public by holding our leaders accountable to the highest standards. There is no excuse for wrongdoing. In Councilmember Kunkel's four-year term, he has been up for censure twice. First, for posting hate speech in a public forum, and now for committing a violation by stealing signs during a campaign race. These are unacceptable. Further compounding this is the fact that our city council did not take a stand when they should have. This is a condemnation of wrongdoing. This is not saying that we need to resign. This is not imposing any sort of punishment. But if we cannot, as a group here, as the public, hold people accountable for wrong behavior, where can we do it? Nowhere is the answer. We must demand better from our leadership. Thank you, Councilmember Vasquez and Cox, for bringing this to attention. I do appreciate you putting it out there. To echo what Mr. Dunning said, I would have appreciated it in a more public forum, where we could have had public comment first. But I do appreciate the need to expedite it and get this situation remedied as soon as possible. I'll skip the rest of this, because I have a long speech here. But servant leaders set the example. Servant leaders accept responsibility for their actions, and servant leaders care. And I'm not seeing that right now. I appreciate all of the work that the council has done in the past. There's a reason why Lacey is one of the top 25 cities to live in this country.
country, and I hope we continue along that pathway, and I hope that we can recover the public's trust and come back together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Zeeman. And that is the end of our list. Is there anyone else in this chamber that wishes to address this council? Please come to the podium. State your name, the city that you live in, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Okay, go. Good evening, City Council. Good to see you guys and ladies. My name is Scott Goodwin. I live in the city of Lacey, have lived here for about over 10 years now. And I'd like to address the council and any of the public that might be listening regarding last Thursday's city council work session. And after hearing tonight's comments, I feel compelled to address the council. Last Thursday evening, a few council members stated the action by a member of this council made the city council look bad. I do not agree. The action taken was done as a private citizen. He is not acting on behalf of this council. To say that would be like saying the alleged actions of Hunter Biden were on the behalf of the man living in the White House. Unfortunately, people on the right love to say that, and people on the left will say one has nothing to do with the other, and I agree with people on the left on that issue. In my opinion, what I observed last Thursday evening was the real embarrassment for this council. Having a city of Lacey city council member call for a motion to censure a fellow Lacey city council member was uncalled for. And then to have another council member second the motion was totally unnecessary. Acting without knowing all the facts of the story and trusting a media hit piece instead was a total disgrace. Since that evening, the private citizen has publicly told his side of the story, and the media had opted not to tell. He has apologized to the property owner and to the candidate for his actions and the misunderstanding. Additionally, financial restitution has been made. I'm certain that all of us, over the years, have said or done things we wish he hadn't done or said. Sometimes things can be resolved, sometimes they can't. The best thing is to face up to a mistake, make amends if possible, and move on. Again, this has been done, and those who respect and agree with that are very decent people, and those who don't or can't are not. I hope this council will continue their good work they do for the city of Lacey and its citizens. I would encourage everyone to move forward. In conclusion, my father once was always fond of telling all of his kids, people in glass houses should not throw stones. I'm also reminded of another saying by a very wise man, and I'm paraphrasing, "He who is perfect among you, let him throw the first stone." I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. We have people attending online. Are any of them wanting to address this council? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our next agenda item under ordinances. And tonight, we have an ordinance number 1640, being presented by Matt Sharp, our assistant city attorney. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, deputy mayor, members of the council. Before you is ordinance 1640 pertaining to the declaration of behavioral nuisances. The Lacey municipal code already does address several different types of nuisance and declare them. They generally have to do with conditions, physical conditions of property. As the city continues to grow, we look forward to what that growth might mean and where we have opportunities to secure the safety and peace of the community. And we look at our code and see that there is a potential type of nuisance that has not yet been declared, that being the chronic behavioral nuisance. That type of nuisance, in a nutshell, would be properties where repeated criminal behavior happen at a frequency that puts the public at risk of harm and that could be remediated and abated. Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Thank you. So chronic behavioral nuisances do pose a harm to the community, but they don't have to. The city currently, without a mechanism and without the nuisance declared, doesn't have a formal mechanism with teeth to engage with property owners to remedy these types of situations. And that primarily is what this ordinance would provide to the city. It would give the city a way to engage with owners or other responsible persons for property to address chronic nuisance issues when they arrive. But if there is no productive conversation generated by the efforts of the city, it does also provide a more formal legal process to pursue these issues so that the city can protect the community. And that also provides due process all the way through an appeal process. So it's a fairly tidy bundled ordinance for the council. I would like to point out, however, there was one typo, well, two typos, but they're right next to each other. I believe each of you have been provided with a corrected copy of page six for the benefit of the public. I'll just address it orally here on the record. On page six, which is a continuation of section 1441060, at the top, subsection eight, there are two citations there to LMC 824060 and 824030. This was a simple typo. The correct citations would be LMC 1441060 and 1441030. Both of those sections are part of this ordinance, so those are internal references. And so I would be happy to answer any questions council members may have. City Attorney's Office is recommending a motion to adopt ordinance 1640 with the corrections noted during this presentation.
I would move to adopt ordinance 1640, amending the Lacey municipal code to add chapter 14.41 pertaining to behavioral nuisances on land and buildings.
Second.
Well, it has been moved and seconded, and all of us have a chance to read through, so let's get into some discussion. Councilmember Cox.
I have a question, and it's something that I've had constituents ask me about. When you talk about a behavioral nuisance, does this also address mental health issues where somebody may be having, be in a mental health crisis and acting out, perhaps in a condo setting, where it's going to, you know, be, there are close neighbors, and other people might feel safe and unprotected.
Thank you, Councilmember Cox, for the question. It's a great question. This defines a specific type of nuisance and declares it, and that is going to fall basically to crimes repeatedly happening there, and those would be detected through police involvement. And those crimes are enumerated in section 1441020 of the ordinance here. So far, insofar as mental health being a component of those issues, that would trigger this mechanism. But this is pretty much limited to those criminal behaviors.
So if the mental health issue produces a crime, is that, are we understanding that right? If the mental health issue produces a crime, and that crime would fall into one of these, I believe it was 17 categories, then it would fall under this.
That's correct, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
I did have, did anybody else have anything? I did have one question, and it came to, it came to the part where, you know, who are we holding responsible for, for, you know, these crimes? And in some cases, we have, you know, there's a lot of rentals in our community, and so we have, you know, the owner of the property, and then we have the person who is in the property. Oftentimes, that person is held to a legal responsibility because of a lease or some document that specifies that they are in control of the property. Absent from said document, how would this apply?
Can I get a clarification on the question? Absent said document?
Yeah, so let's say, for example, you have a rental property. Your tenant's lease has lapsed, right? They are no longer legally bound to your property in terms of responsibility, but they still live there. They're still your tenant. Or, you know, you're allowing somebody to live in your property without a lease, for whatever reason. Am I the owner responsible? Are they the tenant responsible without a lease? Or are they even a tenant? It's, I just wanted to address that gray area, because I know that I'm going to get this question, and it's a concern.
Okay, sure, I understand that. There are really two parts to the question here, and it sounds as though you're wondering, in those cases where maybe a written lease would lapse, and there is an ongoing chronic behavioral nuisance, would that tenant who remained on the property in the same capacity without a formal lease be responsible? Or would they be creating a problem that would be passed on to an owner that didn't have anything to do with it? That's the question I'm hearing.
Correct, yes.
Well, we could run down the rat hole of the Residential Landlord Tenet Act quite a bit, but the state law, in most cases, would pertain in that the tenancy wouldn't necessarily end at the end of the written lease. And this can be a complex area of the law, and if there, you know, are specifics that you're wondering about, I'd be happy to get back to you on that with a little bit of time to research it. In general, there is going to be some person in charge of the property, and just the end of a lease is not often going to absolve a person of maintaining a chronic behavioral nuisance. The ordinance is proposed, provides a presumption that the owner is the person in charge, however that can be overcome. And that can be many people named in the ordinance here. We have some examples, including but not limited to LACEs, tenants, managers, bank lien holders, well, excuse me, similar businesses, receivers, trustees, and occupants with control of the property. So while the conversation can have a starting point that presumes the owner, the owner could, in dialogue with the city, point out, well, this is a leased property. This is the person who is in control of the property, and that would point the city in the right direction. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Councilmember Vasquez.
Just to follow on that, so I'm understanding, it seems like the point of this policy is to incentivize property owners or business owners that may not have been working with law enforcement or addressing bad behavior that's happening on their property. So, you know, if a property owner is aware that these crimes, this alphabet list of different things that could be happening, if they know that these things are happening, and they're engaging with law enforcement, and they're taking action to address the behaviors, this is probably going to be less of an issue, right? This ordinance is in case the property owner is allowing these things to continue to happen, in which case this gives the city something to, kind of to use to begin to engage that property owner, to say, you have to address bad behavior happening on your property. Is that, kind of, am I getting it?
Yes, Councilmember Vasquez, that's, you hit it right on the head there.
Yeah. And if the property owner is across the country, is, yeah, yeah. And so it has been moved and seconded that we adopt this ordinance, which seems very fair. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And are, there are none opposed, so that ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is under the mayor's report, and we have Parks, Culture and Recreation Board reappointment recommendation of Mr. Aram Wheeler. This is a recommendation by the mayor to reappoint Mr. Wheeler to the board of the Parks, Culture and Recreation. The mayor has recommended for the council to reappoint Mr. Wheeler and for this, for his second term. And we'll just need a motion for that. Okay. Well, then I would move, per the mayor's recommendation, that we reappoint Mr. Wheeler to the Parks, Culture and Recreation Board for a second term.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there...
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to offer just one clarification. It's for a third term.
Is it for a third term? Okay, thank you. Well, then, my motion still stands, and it's been moved and seconded. In terms of discussion, I've had, I've got a chance to be onstage with Mr. Wheeler at a couple of events. He is a very fun addition to the board, and he does a great job of representing us, you know, at our events. And so far, we've had great success with him. So, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, are there any opposed? Seeing none? Seeing no opposition, that motion passes. And next on our agenda is another appointment. In this case, we have the LTAC Committee Appointment Recommendation of Mr. Andrew Shin. Is Mr. Shin present? No? Okay. And this appointment is, again, recommended by Mayor Ryder to reappoint Mr. Shin to the LTAC Committee. And I will go ahead and move that we appoint Mr. Shin to the LTAC Committee for the next, I believe it's a 12-month season?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Kunkel?
I just want to make a quick comment. I love the idea of a hotelier being on the LTAC Board. I think that makes a lot of sense, and it's great that he took the time to volunteer for the position.
And it is mandatory that we have a hotelier on that board, and we did, we were, we actually had to postpone a meeting because we were short one. And so it has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And there is none opposed, so that motion passes unanimously, and Mr. Shin has been appointed back to the LTAC Board. Moving along, next on our agenda is the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Our first item we have on the City's Manager's Report is the request to council to authorize the city manager to sign a agreement with Puget Sound Energy for the energy efficiency rebate program. And we have our climate and sustainability coordinator, Lindsay Fields, here to present on the matter. And she's walking up. I just want to highlight that this is an implementation measure from the Climate Action Plan that council adopted about a year and a half ago. And Lindsay will be able to talk about the progress and what the agreement is before the council.
Good evening, council. It's good to see you all again. So tonight, we're talking about the Lacey PSC matching rebate program. Like the city manager said, it's been about a year, year and a half of negotiating and getting the program in place. And really quick, I would just like to thank Ryan, Hans, Grant, and anyone else who worked on it in community and economic development the past year. I really just had the privilege to come in the last two months and close out the deal, so it's really exciting. So tonight, we're requesting that council put in a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreement to effectuate a residential energy efficiency rebate program in partnership with Puget Sound Energy. Just for some background, this graph you're seeing is from the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. It talks about greenhouse gas emissions, particularly in this region, which greenhouse gas emissions are our largest ones. And as you can see, the built environment takes up about 59% of those greenhouse gas emissions. Transportation is the largest, the second largest, at 33%. But tonight, we're really talking about building and the built environment. And so residential energy efficiency programs is often cited by our community as their number one priority when we're talking about climate change, climate mitigation, climate adaptation. And so this program particularly is a matching rebate, and it's an incentive program that helps folks make those energy efficiency changes and participate in programs. And so creating, and then it's also, has been cited as a priority of this council as well, and often in the past, especially when we were talking about adopting the Climate Mitigation Plan, really wanting to see programs like this in the future come forward. And so that's why we're really excited to come with you tonight. And then energy efficiency incentive programs create co-benefits for our residents. So it's not just lowering greenhouse gas emissions. It's not just lowering carbon footprints individually. It's also helping people save money on their energy bill. So if you have a home that's more efficient, saving energy and not losing energy, we know you're going to save money over the long run. And then, so this graph is just like a sample of some of the energy And then, so this graph is just like a, a sample of some of the energy efficiency programming that PSC already has in place. There's a, on our website, and the link is on the next page and it'll, it's actually just went live as of today, there's a whole list of different energy efficiency programs you can participate in, space heating, you can do new windows, even installing insulation qualifies for a lot of different energy efficiency rebates. And so the Matching Rebate Program is an incentive program targeting residential home energy use. In partnership with PSC, the City of Lacey will provide 100% match when Lacey residents complete energy efficiency upgrades through PSC's program. And so how it works, you can visit our website, our new website that just went up today. You can verify that you, you live in the City of Lacey limits. So this is a pilot program. We hope to expand it in the future and offer it to more folks, but as of now, you, you do need to reside within the City of Lacey limits. And so you can go to this really handy website, Do I Live in Lacey? And it'll tell you if you live in Lacey or not. If you do live in Lacey and you've determined that you'd like to go after an energy efficiency rebate through PSC, you're just going to decide what kind of work you're getting done. Again, you can go back to that list, there's that whole list on the website. You can request a contract referral from PSC, although I just want to mention that you don't have to do that step, you can do the work yourself, or you can have a non-contracted PSC person as well. Complete the work and apply through PSC. The biggest thing about this program, it's low barrier on our end, so we're not having folks submit another application to us. And so once they submit the application through PSC, they do the work and submit the paperwork to them, PSC will let us know which rebates have come through and then we'll just send them the check automatically, so they don't have to reapply to the program. And with that, are there questions? And I would just like to say, it is a pilot program again and we hope to expand in the coming years and we're really excited to see, get this out to the community and see how many folks participate. There's my contact information as well. If you have any questions about the program that I can answer tonight, or if anyone in the community has questions, please snap a photo and send me an email or call me. That's all I have.
Does the community have any questions at this point in time for, for the speaker?
Yeah.
No, none? Okay, and?
I would move to authorize the city manager to sign the necessary agreements to effectuate a residential energy efficiency rebate program in partnership with Puget Sound Energy.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Cox.
Well, I just, Lindsay, thank you for the work that you have put into this. I, I know it's been complicated trying to negotiate with PSC's, Puget Sound Energy's bureaucracy and get this through. And I think this is a real win for Lacey residents. I mean, effectively, effectively you get a double rebate if you, if you do, do an energy saving improvement to your home. And I think that's fantastic. And the planet wins too, which is great.
Councilmember Green, say.
Just a quick question. I, I think I understand that, so when they apply to PSC, they get their rebate from PSC, the city, I know there's no separate application, but the city will send them a separate check then? So they'll receive a check from PSC and a separate check from the city?
Actually, what will occur is PSC will receive the rebate forms, they will review, verify that they are a Lacey resident, and then issue the rebate and then provide us the documentation to reimburse PSC. So that there will be this, they'll, PSC will do most of the administration work and we'll verify and, and issue based on that invoice.
Back to PSC, okay.
On a basis.
Excellent, thank you.
Grant, did you have something?
No, just what Rick said.
Okay. I, I first saw this and I thought, you know, immediately of some of those people who came for CDBG funding, who actually help people, you know, rehab their homes and so on and so forth. And I thought, well, this will be really great for those people to, you know, to help other people. My, my next question was, can you use this for insulation? And so the, the question, the answer to that question was, yes, you can use it for insulation, attic installation, if you chose to, you know, if you had an uninsulated garage and you wanted to do something about it, you could use it there too. There is power in the garage, even though it's not really necessarily a heated space. But I thought it would be a great benefit for, I know we have climate goals and, and some of those climate goals, this could help. I mean, I, I don't know how much it's going to help, but this very well could help with our climate goals. So I thought the program itself was, was, was something that, and again, we're the first person, we're the first city doing this. And so once again, we're leading the way. So I was, I was very excited about this program, I hope it really works out really well. It has been moved and seconded. Oh, Councilmember Vasquez.
Just one thing, we got some feedback last winter from a resident about how, you know, he hears us talking about spending, allocating funding to support our climate action goals, but it's hard to find in the budget. So I just thought it was worth pointing out that this is one of those things, that we've dedicated funding to help both residents and help us as a city attain our climate goals. So it's nice that we're able to call this out, right? We're going to spend $50,000 to $70,000, but it's going to help a lot of our residents.
Lindsay, how, what's our marketing strategy on this?
Yeah, that's actually in the scope of work as well. And so we'll be partnering with PSC to market it. We will be in community events and then marketing on the website and then I have a meeting next week with PSC, we're going to start just really figuring out which community events we'd like to be at and then also start taking information out to the community through like, maybe like a traveling, like here's all these different ways we can, like be at coffee shops or something like that. So it's still trying to get figured out with PSC, but through our conversations, we have often talked about the fact that it needs to be heavily marketed so folks can participate.
Are we going to front counter this as well?
Yes, yep.
Councilmember Green, say.
Are we going to put it out in our water bills as well, to our Lacey residents?
Yeah, it'll be in, yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. It'll be in Lacey life, it'll be in our water bills, we're going to put it in hopefully every sort of communication we have at the city.
Okay, well, if, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And it looks like there are none opposed, so that motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lindsay.
Yeah, thank you, Lindsay. The next item we have under the City Manager's Report is another informational item. As the council may recall, last summer, we had a, a proposal in a neighborhood commercial area, the Meridian Market, that caused enough conversation around that topic that the council decided to take a look at the neighborhood commercial district. Our Community Economic Development Department started developing a process to do just that. And I've been out and doing some public engagement and are continuing that process through this summer. Now I want to introduce Hans Shepard, Senior Planner with Community Economic Development, has been managing this project, and he's going to give an update on what we've, what they've done so far. And we're, we are in the process and next steps, so turn it over to Hans.
Good evening, everyone. So I just have a couple of slides for us tonight and it's just going to be a little bit of a refresher and then an intro to our community open house that we're going to have next week, so I will jump right in. As a quick bit of background, we do have eight different locations of neighborhood commercial districts within the City of Lacey, three that are north of I-5 and the rest that are to the south. The intent of these districts is to provide small commercial uses in close proximity to residential areas for day-to-day needs. And I will make a quick note that we do have in total 15 different commercial and/or industrial zoning districts within the city. So these are one district within that larger group that really kind of has that smaller scale, kind of local emphasis, which really kind of defines how they should exist in character compared to some of our other commercial districts. As, as far as where we're at today, we officially kicked this off, this project off at the begin, or the end of last year, beginning of this year, we had a community outreach campaign, we had a, put it up on the city website, had a project page, and that also serves as kind of our informational database. So any materials or research or information or findings that come out of this as we move along, get added to that page. So it's always up there and available for the community to see and learn about and figure out where we're at and learn about next steps. From there, we did a pretty large community outreach survey and then followed that up with actually a business survey. And then also identified some example community districts and other locations that the community, that the Lacey community identified as great examples of what a neighborhood commercial district can be. And then moving into summer where we're at today, we're actually in the process of drafting different code examples and alternatives for the community to review. And then moving into the fall, we're looking at potentially incorporating those updates and implementing those changes. So yeah, on the community outreach side, we've hosted a couple of different hybrid events, both in-person and online. We've had around 150 in-person direct conversations and then about 850 participants in the surveys that we've launched. These different outreach events have been listed through social media, newspaper publications, we've sent out blasts to our HOA contacts, different distribution lists that we have within the city, posted on the website as we talked about, and then also through the youth council. So really just kind of hitting all of our different communication avenues to get the word out and get as much participation and engagement as possible. And then to make sure that we also got a balanced perspective of what it takes to really be successful within these districts, we also reached out to the businesses that are active and currently exist within these zones, there's 36 of them in total. We actually went door-to-door within these zones and we're successful at actually reaching 31 of them where we actually had direct conversations about neighborhood commercial districts, what's working well, what could be better, and how we can really kind of support the success of these zones. We had conversations with site managers, property owners, commercial property owners, and prospective developers amongst others as part of that process. We have two different summary reports that kind of take all the feedback that we've received to date, both at community events, online and in-person, and put them into these reports and kind of summarize them, and that's available on the project website. But as far as some just really high-level takeaways, there are many, but just some of the really high ones that kept showing up throughout those conversations. There is strong community interest in these zones. The intent of these zones, as it's written, is actually a pretty popular idea. That said, the follow-up to that is that they're not necessarily currently achieving that intent as it's currently stated. So looking for ways to really kind of get back to that intent and really making that more of an experience within these zones. And then there is some heightened attention around vehicle and shipping traffic concerns, so that's kind of modal conflict, so between walkers and bikers and cars and trucks and how they all interact within these kind of smaller neighborhood settings and just kind of access and, and yeah, how they all interface within these zones is, is a big topic of conversation. And then a big one is quality food and produce options north of I-5. That could be considered somewhat of a food desert currently, so really finding ways to bring food, additional food options to that side of our community. And then also looking at square foot and setback requirements are not as necessarily adaptive to each different district as they could be. And that was a comment that we've seen a few times. So these districts actually range pretty largely from, you know, right around an acre to up to six or seven acres in size. And really trying to apply that one set of codes across the board has created some challenges that specifically businesses have expressed that might be worth looking at. And then the influence of residential development surrounding, so in the immediate vicinity of these locations and then actually even onsite, really play a high role in the success of these businesses and the viability of them kind of in the long term and what those commercial sites can actually support from a business perspective. So they're really deeply intertwined, the residential and the commercial within these neighborhoods, and they need to remain that way, that's kind of the messaging there. And then, so circling back around to what we're looking at as far as next steps, we have that August 9th meeting coming up, it's actually going to be taking place where you all are sitting, at City Hall. And it's going to be a hybrid format, so it's going to be offered both in-person and then also online. So there's different ways to engage and participate and provide feedback in both hear from us, what we've heard so far and our findings, but then also provide additional guidance and feedback back. And then moving into the fall again, looking to incorporate those changes, formalize them, and then actually move into implementation where we actually get to start realizing and seeing some of those things enacted on the ground. Yep, and again, this is just a quick snapshot of our project page, it's on our website, has all this information, it has all of our resources, it has kind of a timeline, next steps, where we're at, what to expect moving forward. And that is constantly updated as we take steps forward within this project, so it's always current and available for anybody to check out and learn about kind of where we're at and next steps and where to participate and engage. And that's all I have, so I'm just, questions at this point?
Could you bring up the overlay showing the different zones that are neighborhood commercial in your slideshow there, if you could go back a few?
Yeah.
There you go, there you go. Where would be the most ideal spot in northeast Lacey for at least a small grocery store or something to that effect?
So that one is, that's, that's hard to say.
Okay.
There's a lot of different factors. Density is a huge element of that, but it's also setting, it's access, it's other competing commercial sites that are in the area. So we do have those three that are out there. One of them is already kind of in the process of being developed, so Meridian Market is out there, there will be a market element to that site, so that might be able to offer some of that. But as far as something on the larger scale, that is really kind of market-driven, it's definitely allowed and encouraged use. But yeah, we have two different neighborhood commercial districts that could accommodate that, and then there are some more generalized commercial districts that are also out there that could also support that type of a use.
Are you thinking of?
It would be nice to incentivize that somehow. That, that was all I had.
If I can add on to that too, that's, has been actually a focus for our economic development efforts for the city for probably, you know, 15 years, 12 years to try to get some, especially as the Jubilee and the Meridian Campus, you know, master plan started developing out and we're getting more, more rooftops and more neat out there. And one of the challenges we have, of course, it's been affected by the 2008 recession, that's changed the landscape of how, you know, grocers, retailers, they'll look at sites, look at density, look at population. And so it really gets down to having that property owner that has the property, the developer that make the deal together and, and then making that so it's profitable for that, that grocery business. And because again, grocery is a, has a slim margin to it. And also grocery stores are starting to get smaller again as well, and so there's some recalibration within the grocery industry as too. But out there in that area, you've got the neighborhood commercial zones that can support the smaller footprints, the 10,000 square feet or less are currently, but that's also part of the, the process of this review is look at those standards and try to see if there's other things that can be done to entice or incentivize, you know, food market-type uses. Hans mentioned the Meridian Market has a market component, but it's also coupled with as a convenience center too, so it's, there's different dynamics. And then you have the opportunities down along the Marvin Road Corridor, especially closer to Exit 111, the Hawksbury Business District, kind of the, what we call the Bette Trust Process, that light industrial commercial can have the opportunity for some type of more fresh produce markets or smaller-scale footprints that eventually will, we will see coming at, at the point we can put the deal, the developer, the property owner and the, and the user can put the deal together. But we also could look at going forward, how do we do incentivize or promote and reduce some of those barriers that we have in our, our regulations too.
I just think it'd be helpful to have that conversation and see who we can reach out to in the, in the grocery industry and get some kind of feedback on what would it take? Because there's, there's definitely a demand and a need for it. So we hear that all the time.
There is, and one of the challenges we have is we're trying to connect with those that are willing to look at the, the market based off of the actual market dynamics, localized dynamics, but a lot of times, especially if you get some of those credit tenant-type uses, they look at more of their macro studies and, and more of a national perspective. And again, we're always trying to highlight that this is a very, you know, localized market that has a very strong market, and a lot of people come through, not only live out there, but also travel through during their commute pattern down through the Marvin Road Corridor, so there is a, a built-up audience there.
Just a quick question for you, Hans. I think you had mentioned that with the different neighborhood commercial zones, do they all have to have the same guideline? I mean, so could we actually have different, you know, square footage requirements, all of that in, in the different zones, or is it because they're all the same zone, they have to have the same, you know, basis there?
Yeah, so as it's currently written, we have a little bit of both. So it is, for example, the setbacks are dependent on what's immediately adjacent to these sites, so that is kind of a moving target. But as far as business, building footprints and square footages, those are pretty universal across each one of these sites. So that was one of the things that we were hearing as part of the feedback that we are looking at, especially when we are looking at comparative districts and other communities and seeing what kind of approaches they're implementing. So that's going to be one of the discussion points as part of this meeting on next Wednesday that's going to kind of explore and provide some of those other example districts as examples and highlighting kind of those key elements, so things like setbacks. examples and highlighting kind of those key elements, so things like setbacks and square footage and height allowances, and then also offering that side-by-side with kind of visual examples of what that actually looks like in practice. And then we'll be actually taking feedback from that event to really kind of rewrite and kind of write new draft language within our code for, to really kind of meet the expressed desires of the community at that point.
Just a kind of a follow-up, I guess, to that. Same, same concept, but would we also be able to have different allowed uses? Because, you know, these neighborhood, these neighborhood commercial zones, although similar, are in different parts of the city, and there may be different needs in those different parts, so could we have different allowed uses in them?
That's also one of the things we're going to be looking at is, so what are the other uses that are allowed in other districts versus what are currently allowed in our districts? The challenge with listing specific uses is that this section of our code doesn't get updated all that often, and what we have is we currently have things in there like movie rental stores and, I'm blanking on some of the other ones, but there are some in there that are pretty dated. So by the time, you know, they go into our code, get adopted, and, you know, look at it after a couple of years, that might not still make sense within that district. So finding ways that, you know, casts a wide enough net to really kind of allow a range of uses, and then also backing that up with kind of conditional uses. So maybe some that only make sense in certain locations, but still have that built-in extra element that we get to kind of look at and a little bit more and really kind of fine-tune those uses to really match that location or district. So there is some different code approaches that we can take to it, but definitely exploring ways that we can kind of more right-size each district to the location that it's in, something that we're going to be talking about.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I can just emphasize that last part that Hans said about right-sizing each district, because something we're looking at is you have neighborhood commercials throughout the city, but you have different uses, arterial road connections, neighborhood connections, you know, around them. So part of this process is to identify what those unique characteristics are and maybe have, you know, different types of neighborhood commercial under the neighborhood category, but based on their location, be able to have different, meet different needs for that particular location as well as design needs.
So northeast Lacey has been talking about, you know, grocery and retail out there for a while, you know, and, you know, having looked into a little bit of what those retailers are looking for in terms of population density and the amount of spend, you know, it is not there yet, unfortunately, and it makes me sad to say that because I actually live out there, and I would like it too, but the population is, there's, the density isn't quite there for a Safeway or a Walmart or just quite yet. Now, once, you know, the Gateway Project, if, you know, that gets built out and we have, you know, greater density in the area and a greater daytime population, these things may be possible. And I'm not trying to crush anybody's dream, okay? I'm not. I'm just throwing in a dose of reality for the sake of this particular conversation, and I am looking forward to the possibility that we can get into a work session and drill down on each of these individual sites and craft them for what is needed in that specific area. I just know that, you know, that that wish list may take a little longer than what it seems like. That is it.
Thank you, Hans.
Thank you, everyone.
I do have one other thing on the city manager report, kind of a good news issue. So I think the council's been aware that we've had the state auditor's team come visit us and conduct their audit of our financial matters for the 2022 calendar year, and we just had our exit audit interview last Friday, and I am pleased to announce that the audit came out as a clean report. There, they identified no findings of material misstatements, significant deficiencies in internal controls, or instances of non-compliance. And out of this process, the state auditor's office will issue us their opinion letter showing that clean audit that we'll be able to use in our submission to the Government Finance Officers Association Achievement of Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. So we'll be submitting that in to the GFOA. One of the things I want to add on to is I want to congratulate and thank Troy Wu for his leadership and his team in finance with Chelsea Yarwood and Kristy Wolf and the rest of the finance team. In one, meeting and responding to all the questions and information that the state auditor's office asked for, and then also just maintaining our internal controls and financial matters with the public stewardess of funds. Also, I do want to highlight, too, that while they are the point of this, it takes the entire organization to follow line of those practices. So I do want to thank all the entire organization for how they approach their spending and their procurement and making sure that we are good stewards of public finances. So again, I want to congratulate Troy Wu and his team and the entire organization for this clean audit.
Yeah. I think we've probably lost count of how many accolades Troy's and his department and his leadership and guidance has brought to the city. Amazing. Thank you, Troy.
And as we do, and I find out in the audit real, we'll be doing it all over again this September because now we'll be up for the special audit for accountability session. For that would be a two-year audit, and so they'll be coming back and doing additional audit. They decided to break it up into two batches this time around to give us a little bit of a breather. So they'll be back and Troy's team will be working with the state auditor's team here shortly.
Special audit. That sounds like fun. Next on our agenda, standing general committees and finance and economic development committee. Mayor Ryder typically briefs on that. He is absent today. I will brief in his place. The finance committee met on July 25th. Several agenda items, I'll highlight a couple of those briefly. The Sunday market attendance at the depot is up, and if you haven't been out there to see it, it is pretty cool. There's several, several vendors just behind the train depot building and just adjacent to all the food trucks, so that area is really, really growing in the attendance for that area, and that Sunday event is just going off the charts at this point in time. So very grateful and happy for those vendors who get a chance to come out and show their products and sell their products and have a good time, and I'm glad that we are actually out there, you know, promoting the microbusinesses and giving them space and room to grow here in the city. So Lacey Makerspace expansion is going to be going under construction soon. Construction actually starts this month. The Lacey Makerspace is expanding from thirty-five hundred feet to ten thousand feet, so it will be really almost triple in size for that, for that place. The bids and permits are approved, and one other thing that Lacey Makerspace was able to do is, you know, partner up with the library, and so the library will check out Lacey Makerspace membership cards for library members and cardholders so that they can go and try out the Makerspace, you know, so that they can fabricate and create. So very exciting. If you are a library cardholder, you will be able to check out a Makerspace card and go over and make your product, so that'll be, that'll be great. The Makerspace will also be fabricating signs for the new Nisqually State Park, and so there will be a joint venture there to help promote the state park down in Nisqually. Next, we also have our SEDs, our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which is going to be completed in October, and what this is going to allow us to do is it's going to allow Thurston County to join a federal economic development district, which will actually give us access to some federal funding that we do not currently have access to because Thurston County is not involved in a federal economic development district, neither is Walla Walla. We, we wanted to be a part of one. There was one that was created that we didn't quite make it into that one. That one has kind of disbanded, and the EDC has kind of taken the reins and got us into place to become part of an economic development district. So typically, if you wanted to access some of these types of funds, you would have to be in a distressed area. Thurston County is nowhere near distressed, at least not by a federal standard. So this will, will help out the county immensely and will allow us to have access to some federal funds that we normally wouldn't be able to touch. The, this district will be comprised of Thurston County, Mason County, Gray's Harbor County, and Pacific County. And let's see. The, the EDD or the EDA has funding priorities, and some of those funding priorities line up fairly well with what, the things that we have established as priorities for our county and our region. And so some of those are equity recovery and resilience, workforce development, manufacturing, things that we have brought to the county and areas of interest that we are pursuing to bring to the county. And that is my report. Next on our agenda, we have item fifteen, boards, commissions, and committee reports. The mayor is absent, and I do not have a report, and next we have Councilmember Cox.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The lot staff, lot meeting for July, there was none. There was no July meeting for the Regional Housing Council, but the Climate Collaborative Executive Committee did meet. We reviewed a new draft inter-local agreement and regional guidance document. The agreement helps restructure the organization a bit to allow for the Thurston Regional Planning Council to step away as the convener administrator and to transition the elected representatives into a true policymaking body that will meet much less frequently, three times a year plus an annual retreat. And then the working, the major workings of the group will be carried out by a citizen advisory work group as well as staff from Lacey, Olympia, Thurston County, and the city of Tumwater. As the TRPC steps away, we're contracting with two consultants to handle the administrative tasks and then to, with an organization called ICLI, which has offices in Seattle to do the carbon gap analyses so that we can measure our progress on reducing carbon emissions here. We also received a progress update on regional initiatives from Alyssa Jones Wood, who is the climate coordinator, Lindsay's counterpart, for the city of Tumwater. And the regional efforts that the group agreed to work toward are regional energy audits and voluntary home energy audit and efficiency campaign initiatives. We also agreed that the executive committee would work to advance rural tree canopy targets and state forest lands management advocacy, but with minimal staff involvement. And Rebecca Harvey, who is the Thurston County's climate coordinator, clarified that the focus of the state forest lands management advocacy will be on establishing a dedicated funding source for purchasing replacement stands of younger trees and enrolling more land in the Department of Natural Resources' carbon project. And that's my report.
Just one report this evening. TCOM 911 actually met yesterday, and a couple of things I think of interest to Lacey would be, work continues on the radio system that we've been talking about now for a couple of years. The site work is ongoing. We are still in the process of trying to get the permit taken care of for the Thurston County site that we've discussed in the past. Been working on that permit for about three years now, and it's not quite complete yet, but it's moving forward hopefully. They've started the process of training the trainers, so as we build this new system, this new digital system, the Motorola, who is the manufacturer of the system, will be training people locally to then train all of our firefighters, EMS, you know, police officers, everyone for using the system, as well as our dispatchers and call takers. So Fourth of July is the single busiest day of the year for TCOM. It is, they get more calls on Fourth of July than any other day of the year, and between nine PM and one AM on the Fourth of July this year, six hundred and twenty-five calls. A very, very high percentage of them should not be being made to 911. They are not emergencies. We really need to find a way to better educate the population on that because it's, it created a huge problem in that the system actually failed. The system actually failed and calls didn't come through, and we don't know exactly how many, but not only did our system fail, Pierce County's system failed as well as did several other, all of whom used the same phone system provider that we use, Solocom, which we've had a couple of problems in the past that we thought we had worked through, but we are now in very serious talks with them about how do we correct this to make sure it doesn't happen in the future. The system is set up to accept thirty-six calls at the same time, right? That's what we should be able to get. If there's more than that, it should go to a fast busy signal so that people know to try calling again. Instead of that, what happened was it got sent back to the provider and then back to us. So although there were six hundred and twenty-five calls, at one point on the board, it showed over nine hundred calls, and that's because those same calls kept pinging back and forth. So some calls came in, you know, twenty-five times, the same call, because they kept pinging back and forth. So obviously a problem, you know, we need 911 to work properly. They did go back and call everyone that, any call that was missed, there were no emergencies that weren't handled, so nothing bad happened from it, but obviously we need to make sure to rectify the situation, so that is my report.
Do you mind if I ask a quick question?
No, please.
Thirty-six, is that, why is that a magic number? Is that the bandwidth? Is that, is that, is that because of personnel?
No, so there's actually sixteen people in there at a time, so actually thirty-six is more than they could actually, that would put, some of them would go on hold. You know, it would be impossible, it's like anything with emergency services, right? Police, fire, any of that. It's impossible to know when things are going to happen and how many people you need at any given time, so it would be, you know, an impossibility to actually staff that 911 center fully to where you can handle regardless of how many calls came in, right? It's not, just not doable. So then that number works fine. Again, this is the single busiest day of the year is the Fourth of July.
Wow, thank you. Councilmember Kunkel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I just have one report for SWAC. We met yesterday, and I'm going to give you some highlights. We had a presentation on Washington Organics Management Law. We have a new law going into effect next year per legislative priority. The goal of this organic management is to divert seventy-five percent of previously disposed commercial organic waste by the year 2030 and rescue up to twenty percent of previously disposed edible food for consumption by 2025. In January, which, I'm sorry, in January, businesses which are prone to about eight cubic yards of food waste per week will start to utilize a food waste bin and subscribe to a pickup service. And in January of 2025, that same law will apply to local businesses that generate at least four cubic yards of food waste per week. Next, we had a presentation on Next Cycle Washington. It's a group that promotes a circular economy by working with industry to reduce or eliminate waste and pollution, circulate products and materials, and regenerate nature. And they're giving us kind of a thirty-thousand-foot view of how they operate. And then the board voted to amend our bylaws relating to the membership code to better reflect the additional members that are coming on the Board of County Commissioners. We will still have up to fifteen members, and we made some minor changes to titles on the board. And that is my only report for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Kunkel. Councilmember Vasquez.
Just one report. Intercity Transit met yesterday and let us know that they had updated their public records policy. They also gave an update on the general manager hiring process. I'm on the subcommittee assisting with them, finding a replacement for Ann Monceneras that many of us have worked with in the past. Interviews for the general manager position are scheduled for October, so late October we should be interviewing some of the finalists that we have identified, and the posting is going to be coming out really soon, and I may share that with this council so that we can also broadcast it, just so we have to widen that to get good candidates. The stand-in general manager also shared that July 26th was the thirty-third anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, so she took a moment to call out the fact that, you know, twenty-six percent of adult Americans live with a disability of some kind, and public transit is one of the ways that we can reduce barriers for people with disabilities to navigate. barriers for people with disabilities to navigate our communities and live fruitful lives and contribute. So just thought that was, every time I hear how long ago we passed the Americans with Disabilities Act, it does not feel like very long. It's amazing to me that it's 33 years we've had protections for people with disabilities in the workplace, so it's a good thing to celebrate.
It's relatively new.
Yep. That is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Vasquez. And with that report, we have reached the end of our agenda. Thank you all for attending tonight, and I don't really have any real final words. I appreciate everybody who spoke tonight, and I appreciate you guys coming out and coming to council meetings. And with that, I will, I will say, you keep it classy, Lacey. This meeting is adjourned.